It is 11 o'clock and we're on the air. I'm going to wait for Mr. Delay to give us the okay. He just gave us the okay. So, welcome everybody to the September 16th study session. I'm Lori Kinnear. I'm sitting in for Candace Mum, who is our council president pro tem. And we have four council members here, so I think we can go ahead and start. On our schedule today, we have a special guest. I'm going to let Kara Oldegaard introduce him. We're also hopefully going to get an update on our ARP process. And I'm going to hope that council member Wilkerson is here to do that. And then we will be having an executive session, about 45 minutes at the end of that time. So Kara, I'm going to let you take it away.
Great, thank you council member Kinnear. And good morning council members. Thank you for being here today. I would like to introduce Tim Trhemevich, who is the Director of Planning and Law at Futurewise. We asked him to be here at the request of council member Mum and myself in hopes that we can better understand some of the land use decisions that we as a council, but also as a community are making. As you know, there's been a lot of suggestions and recent requests from the Sustainability Action Subcommittee. And now that we're addressing our growth here in Spokane and the region, and also the housing crisis, we are looking to understand how our impact, our decisions on land use might impact our future natural ecosystems, our agricultural lands, and the economic impact as well. So we have a series of speakers, and Tim is the first. He's here today to talk a bit about the natural, preserving our natural spaces as we make decisions for growth. So with that, I will pass it over to you, Tim, and I'll let you begin.
Well, good morning. As you've heard, my name is Tim Trhemevich. I'm the Director of Planning and Law at Futurewise. We're a statewide nonprofit organization that works to make cities and towns great places to live, but also protect farms and forests for this and future generations. And I very much appreciate you inviting me here today. And I very much look forward to hearing your questions and comments. But again, thank you for having me. I was asked to address a couple of topics, and so I'm going to spend a little over 10 minutes talking about those, and then I'm going to hear your comments and questions and thoughts. One of them was, how can we better protect critical habitats? And both the Growth Management Act and the Shoreline Management Act require the protections of those habitats. In a few years, the city of Spokane and Spokane County are going to be updating both their comprehensive plans, and then a year later, their, their critical areas regulations which focus on them. And so one of my first regulate recommendations is to update your critical area regulations to make sure that they incorporate best available science in the designation and protection of critical areas. I think your critical area ordinance does a good job of designating. Potentially, you might want to think about whether the city would like to initiate some designations of habitats and species of local importance. Now, your, your regulations talk about a citizen nomination process, and you might want to think about, does the city itself want to nominate some of those species and habitats if there are gaps in the species that you want to protect? An important part in a city like Spokane, and frankly throughout Washington State, is to make sure that we plan for restoration. The Shoreline Master Program specifically require a restoration plan, and you've got a pretty good one. Thank you for that. But again, restoring publicly owned lands, restoring buffers that don't have native vegetation in them is a really important thing to do. Of course, it's important to encourage restoration, support restoration funding at the local, state, and federal levels. Our legislature's been pretty generous with restoration funding. There's a belief that the federal government may redouble their efforts on funding for restoration as part of the 30 for 30 program and other programs. So supporting that, I think, would be a valuable thing to do. Your participation on the Growth Management Steering Committee of Elected Officials is really important, because a lot of these habitats cross borders. And so continuing to be on that committee, continuing to be an active voice for both the protection and restoration of habitats is very valuable. One of the tools that the Steering Committee has is the county planning policies. And those, I think, could use a significant update, and you may want to, and I would recommend that you strengthen measures there for protecting habitats. I think that could be a very valuable thing as well. There has been a bill in the state legislature, and will probably, well, it will be in the coming 2020, too short session, to change the standard for protecting fish and wildlife habitats and other critical areas from no net loss to a net gain. You could consider supporting that bill as part of your legislative agenda, and talking to other cities about why that would be a valuable bill. One of the ways that's really important for protecting fish and wildlife habitat is to focus growth in existing cities and towns. And so by continuing to focus growth in your city, you help protect those habitats. Oops, okay, I don't know. Well, hopefully, hopefully you've been able to see my PowerPoint. Some similar recommendations for conserving agricultural lands. One of the most important is to work with the county not to expand urban growth areas onto agricultural and forest lands. Keeping them outside the urban growth area is one of the most important steps we can take to protect them. It's also important to designate and zone these lands in advance, both if you want some inside the city and outside the city. So people know that these are the habitat, or excuse me, that these are the agricultural lands you're going to protect. For lands within the urban growth area, if you want to designate them as agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance, and reserve them for those uses, it's good to implement a transfer or purchase of development rights program. And even if you just want to continue to maintain them as other things, that can be a really valuable program to do that. It can also be valuable to work with land trusts to identify and acquire in advance really important agricultural land parcels. The Skagitoniems to Preserve Farmland have done a really excellent job of this. They're a nonprofit. They raise money privately, but they also are open to using state and federal funds. And they've identified key parcels that they acquire development rights from for, one of their main priorities is to acquire the development rights that highway interchanges on I-5 to prevent those from being converted, and to protect the farmland that's adjacent to them and farther away from the highway. So those kinds of strategic purchases of development rights can be really, really helpful. Or you can purchase the land outright and then lease it to farmers. Again, very helpful in protecting that land. You can help land trusts get state and federal funding. You can support funding at the local, state, and federal level. And again, as part of the 20, or excuse me, 30 and 30 program, it's believed that there's going to be a lot more federal funds available for that as well. Again, your participation in the Steering Committee is really valuable. One of the things you can also do at the state level is the State of Washington Department of Commerce is in the process of updating their guidelines for designating and protecting agricultural and forest lands. Supporting improvements to that would be extremely helpful. Futurewise and some other organizations are pushing commerce to better designate and better protect those lands. Your support would be really, really helpful. Updating the county planning policies would be valuable. Again, focusing growth in Spokane, not on farmland, not on forest land, is very valuable. I know you don't want to talk about using your water tool, but water is very scarce in Spokane County. Your water is a valuable tool for directing growth. And you could just say, we're not going to provide water for developments that are going to occur on farmland. That would be really helpful and would be a powerful tool. Inside the city, you should continue to allow agriculture and appropriate zones like you do now. You might want to take a look at some of your provisions to make sure they achieve what you want. Your continuing support for farmers' markets is really valuable. Continuing to support agricultural processing, shipping, again, also very valuable. How can you sort of better coordinate development in your urban growth area so it meets your objectives and the objectives of the residents of Spokane County? One way to do that is to work with Spokane County to incorporate your development standards into the development standards that the county uses to review development in your urban growth area. Other counties do it. Douglas County requires compliance with city regulations and city standards for development in their UGA. Franklin County adopts the comprehensive plans of the cities in the county and some of the development regulations as well. Thurston County has incorporated all of the development regulations for the major cities that have urban growth areas into their development regulations, and applies them to development in those jurisdictions, UGAs. If that's a bridge too far, you could work with the county on joint development standards for key public facilities and services in your urban growth area. You could also adopt requirements for key retrofits when you annex land into the city. And then finally, you can continue your good work on trees. And one of the questions was asked is, well, what about trees and tree canopy? I think you've got some excellent urban forestry programs and street tree programs. Street trees are really wonderful in your city. You've got some great neighborhoods with lots of street trees. And you've also got the Spoke Canopy Program, which is trying to expand that into city, into parts of the city that are not well-served by street trees. Those are both great programs. I would continue that. Advocating for continued urban forestry funding at the state level is valuable. Our legislature's actually been pretty generous on that. But continuing to get that money flowing, particularly as our summer temperatures rise, and we need that shade to keep it tolerable, is a really valuable and important thing to do. You could also adopt reforestation standards for sites that are logged in the county, and then that either need city water utilities and are ultimately annexed to the city. You could have standards for reforesting those areas. And that's really all I wanted to cover, but what I'd really like to do is to answer your questions and hear your comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Tim. I can't see, yes, now I can see everybody. I'd love to have some questions from council. And after council asks questions, Kara, you had some questions as well that I'd like you to ask. So can we start with council and see if anybody has? And I don't see you all there, so speak up if you have questions, please. Councilmember Wilkerson. You're on mute.
Just a comment.
There you go.
No, I'm unmuted. Just a comment on the water, the challenge of water in our county. We have been lobbied for some areas outside. I don't think we've ever truly embraced our power of not designating water to farmland. So that would be a discussion, at least I haven't had that discussion. So that would be kind of fascinating as we go forward. So thank you for that.
And going forward, we should talk about that, because that's something I'm interested in too, is how do we work with our, our water rights and designate who gets water and why? So thank you for that. Council President, did you have? Okay, great. Anybody else? Councilmember Burke or Cathcart? Okay. Kara, do you want to go ahead and ask your question?
I don't really-
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to thank Tim for being here and sharing with us a lot of this stuff. I'm definitely interested in, in hearing more about the water rights, something that I've been really focused on in the last couple of years in terms of who we give our water to, and, you know, do we go outside the UGA? Do we go outside the urban growth boundary? Those type of things. And how do we determine, I guess, a matrix of who we're able to give water to and who we're not? So definitely interested in that. And thank you for being here and sharing with us a little bit about what you do and what, and work on, so.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart, did you have a question or comment?
No, nothing for me. Just happy to listen to Tim's presentation.
Kara, do you want to go ahead? I know you had about three really good questions. Do you want to go ahead and ask those?
Yes, and I gave those questions to Tim ahead of time, so he's mostly answered them. But I, I don't know if you are prepared to answer Councilmember Burke's question about water services, because that's certainly something that's relevant. So feel free to answer that one. But Councilmember Mum had asked, that she wants to know how, what control, how do we have control over what happens in our future GMA for prime soils, working farms, critical habitat, et cetera? Besides restricting water and utilities, often the damage is done prior to annexation into the city or prior to any request for utilities.
Sure. As I mentioned, one of the things that would be very powerful tool would be to get the county to adopt your, either your zoning regulations that would apply to those areas in the urban growth area, but outside the city as their regulations that they apply to them. Or at least to agree on a common set of standards, you know, that you're going to have these water conserving measures incorporated into it, or there are going to be sidewalks, or whatever the key issues that you're concerned about are. Other counties do that, and it's a really valuable tool for the counties that do that. In Thurston County, and in Douglas County, and also in Franklin County, it really removes a lot of friction between the city and the county, because the county is applying to that. If you can't do that, of course, you can have a strict policy, you can't get our water and sewer without annexation. I know that you now require agreements to annex, but you could just say, no, you got to annex. And that way, you can directly apply your standards. If those aren't practical, you can try to work out with the county at least some subset of provisions that'll apply to those areas. But, you know, those strategies have been used successfully elsewhere, and they can really help. You know, frankly, and I know you don't want to talk too much about water, so I won't, but there just isn't unallocated water in your county anymore. Now, you can still, in some places, use permit exempt wells, even though all the water in those air basins is allocated, but you can do that. But if you're going to build a subdivision in your county, it's going to have to come from an existing water provider. And you're one of the few providers that has water for future use. And that can help shape development in the county. But one of the things you also need to worry about is, once your water's allocated, it's going to be allocated. So you want to make sure that you keep water for uses in your city. From Futurewise's perspective, it's way better to have development and people in Spokane than on farmland, or forest land, or even rural land in Spokane County. It's going to use less water, because their lots are probably going to be smaller. You can incorporate water conservation services. It's going to generate less greenhouse gases, because they can use your more effective transit system. It's going to better provide public facilities and services, because frankly, cities do a way better job. You've got way both more taxing authorities, more fee authorities, and you've got more authorities to undertake providing public facilities and services than counties do. So, you know, development in Spokane is way better from a lot of perspectives than development in unincorporated areas. And so we'd encourage you to, to continue to do that. And you've seen a fair amount of growth in Spokane since, make sure I got my number right, yeah, since 2017, which was when the current growth targets have been adopted through 2021. Eight, oops, yep, 8,000 people have been added to the city of Spokane, which is a pretty significant amount of growth.
Councilmember Cathcart, go ahead.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, obviously, we are seeing increased populations and, and a housing crisis that is, has no end in sight. So I guess, what would be Futurewise's perspective then on if, if the city's unable or unwilling to change certain obstacles to infill growth, but then we're also opposing any sort of growth that would happen within the urban growth boundary but outside the city? How do we accommodate all the residential development that we need under that circumstance?
Well, the Growth Management Act has been amended in the last session to beef up the requirements for planning for housing. And so when you do your next comprehensive plan update, you're going to be looking at, what is the need? What is our capacity? What do we need to do for affordable housing? What densities do we need for affordable housing? And incorporate those policies both into your comprehensive plan, and then regulations to implement it into your development regulations. And so I think there are some tools in the Growth Management Act to help you get the housing that you need in the city of Spokane. So I would urge you to-
Tools, yes.
-do that process.
But we have to be willing to adopt those tools and implement policies related to those. And that, that may or may not occur. I'm just asking, if we're not willing to do that, but then we're also banning development outside the city, but still inside the urban growth boundary, where does residential development occur?
Well, as I said, from our perspective, it's way better to have it in Spokane.
I would agree with you. But we got to change rules to make that happen.
That's, that's what the amendments to the housing element are all about.
Thank you. Any other council members? Kara, did you have a couple more questions?
Well, I was just wondering if Tim or Futurewise has any data or information around the economic impacts for cities who are providing services or infrastructure outside of, maybe at the fringe or edge of the water service area, or into the growth, outside of the Growth Management Act? Do you have, can you speak to that at all?
Sure. I mean, you know, we haven't done a cost of services study for Spokane, so, you know, I, I can't give you Spokane-specific numbers. But there's actually been a lot of work on this and a lot of peer-reviewed studies, one of which looked at a number of counties in Washington State, including Spokane County. And what they found is that the cost of providing public services and facilities is lower when you've got more compact, higher-density development, and it's a lot higher when you've got low-density development out on the fringe. And, you know, and that just makes sense. You know, one of the problems with water, and I apologize for keeping to it, but one of the issues with water is that the longer your pipe system, the more you're going to leak. It's, it's just the way it is. You know, new pipes are better than the old pipes were certainly, but you're still going to see leaks, particularly over time. And so if you've got a more compact system serving the same amount of people, it's going to be more efficient to build, it's going to be more efficient to operate, and you're going to lose less water. And so you're going to have more water for the in-stream flows, and more water for the people who live in Spokane and other, other cities, because I know that you provide water to other cities, too. So those kinds of things can be win-win. I'd be happy to send you a copy of that study, and there have been other studies that have been done as well, that look at those. And they all pretty much arrive at the same place, that compact development is cheaper. And one of our former board members, who was the Executive Director of the Growth Strategies Commission that led to the second set of amendments to the GMA, always pointed out to us that one of the reasons the Growth Management Act was adopted, it was to reduce costs for government, to make sure that we're providing our public facilities and services in the most economical way. She always pointed out, we're a fast-growing state. In the 1990s, we grew by a million people. In the last decade, we didn't quite grow by a million people, but almost. So we're a fast-growing state. It's not like we're, can say no to growth, but we can say yes to providing growth in the most efficient way possible. And that's one of the goals of the Growth Management Act. Actually, it's embodied in two GMA goals, actually, but, so I shouldn't say one goal.
Anything else from council or from Kara? Right. I would request you, Tim, if you could, send that PowerPoint to Kara so that she can share with council. And I know Councilmember Mum is going to want to see that as well. So that would be great.
Great. And I, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have in the future, either by email, or phone, or however you want to do it.
Can't thank you enough. It's been great and good information for us to ponder, especially as we go forward with some of our development incentives to, as Councilmember Cathcart said, we, we have to change some things we're doing in the city in order to create more density. So I look forward to that. So thank you, Tim. Appreciate your time. And we're going to move into, the other thing on our agenda was ARP update. And Councilmember Wilkerson, I don't know if there is anything that you wanted to share in that regard.
No, Councilmember Kinnear, there is no update. We're just still continuing to stand up a process that's effective for everybody.
Does council have any questions for, for, Councilmember Wilkerson, Mum, and Council President are on the committee to talk about process for distributing funds. Does, do any of the other council members have questions for Councilmember Wilkerson? Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just, when are we going to have the conversations on the actual, or potential expenditures?
At this time, we are looking to contract with the provider to make sure the applications that have come in meet the ARPA requirements. And so that will be the first screening tool, Councilmember Cathcart. That will be going on as we set up the process. There really is a challenge of how much resources will be needed to assist the city for its losses in 2020. So that's information we need from the administration. Then again, once those applications or requests have been vetted and they do meet the ARPA requirements, then they can be advanced to the next stage.
And so will the, will the consultant that's brought on, will, will they review everything that's been submitted and segregate between what matches the requirements and what doesn't? And then, and we'll move forward from there?
For the most part. There will be some requests that we know automatically qualifies for ARPA money. But there will be some that we consider in the gray area that will need a little bit more expertise. Do you want to type something in the chat? Council President begs, he's looking anxious. Okay. So at this time, all those requests are being parked and reviewed, and so nothing has come forward as, actually towards the funding. At the rate we're going, I'm hoping November will be an opportunity for us to start deploying some of those resources.
Thank you. We are, anybody else have questions for Councilmember Wilkerson? Okay. We're going to go into executive session for, let's see, I think 30 minutes, is that right? Okay, 30 minutes. And the purpose will be to discuss labor negotiations, to 70 and fire. to 70 and fire. So you should all have a link that Jacoby sent you because we're going to go out of this session into executive. And then I will come back and close the study session. So we will see you on the other side. Thanks, everyone, for attending the study session. And we will see you Monday, September 20th, for our legislative session. It will be at 3:30, not 6 o'clock. Thanks very much. It is 11 o'clock, and we're on the air.